Okay, my clock has 7:00 PM, so welcome to the Manhattan City Commission meeting for Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, and we'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item on the agenda is we have some proclamations, and the first one is National Public Works Week. And so I think, Rob, you had some folks you wanted to recognize?
Oh, boy. Now I gotta remember names. This is the hard part, right? All right, well, I got a few folks in the audience, too, but we'll start with Mr. Terry. Terry's on a street crew. Let's see, 40 years is coming up just around the corner. Don't be surprised, Mayor, if he, he said he wanted a parade down Points Avenue, so... So anyways, Sean Curtis, another street, all those potholes on the city source. Darren, is Darren here tonight? Oh, there's Darren, geez, there's Darren. Darren and Matt, two of our concrete specialists. They're up in the Sunset Zoo area right now. They do, they got some fun of doing some foundations recently for some buildings. Tyler, where's Tyler? He's a little tired. He was up playing with the floodgates last night, actually, Sunday night as well, so... Heavy rains, manages our levee system for us. Again, we got another passing inspection this year, so Tyler and his crew do an outstanding job. Let's see, Donnie, I think, is sick. Travis Potter, Travis, maintenance crew leader now. He, on the sanitary sewer side, but also I think, I see lots of emails from Travis. And I don't know, is AJ up here? Yep, there's AJ as well, and water main breaks, so those are the guys that, when it's negative 20 and snow and ice, they're the individuals that are out in those holes, making sure those repairs services get returned. Then we got a couple of other troublemakers, Doug and Odin, from the water treatment plant. About 90 years of experience right there at the water treatment plant. Forty-one, so those two gentlemen have seen quite a bit in changes with the water treatment plant over the years. Trained lots of operators, take a great deal of pride in their work. Make sure that we have safe, every gallon we drink is nice and safe, and do a great job at the water treatment plant. And then last, we've got Tim. Tim's out at the wastewater treatment plant. Not head mechanic yet, we've got to talk him into that yet. I've had some folks leave, but Tim's been with the city, I want to say, over 15 years now? Twelve? Okay, it's getting close. But again, making sure all those pumps and everything. And I got a few other troublemakers out there as well. We have Karen Becker from engineering, Bill Heatherman, stormwater compliance. Ethan is our water treatment plant superintendent. We've got Dan Tyson, I don't know, he's got like four titles in his name as well. Ben Kearns, management assistant. Overall, about 125 folks in public works. And I don't know if you want to do a proclamation, and I got a really short speech. Go ahead, sir.
Whereas public work services provided in our community are an integral part of our citizens' everyday lives and creates a lasting impression, the health, safety, and comfort of this community greatly depends on these facilities and services. The support of an understanding and informed citizenry is vital to the efficient operation of public work systems and programs such as water, sewers, streets, and storm sewers. The quality and effectiveness of these facilities, as well as their planning, design, and construction is vitally dependent upon the efforts and skill of public works officials. The efficiency of the qualified and dedicated personnel staff, personnel who staff public works departments is influenced by the people's attitude and understanding of the importance of the work they perform. Now therefore, Lynn Butler, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby proclaim the week of May 16th through the 22nd of 2021 as National Public Works Week.
Thank you, Brenna. I'll keep this, I'll keep this real short. You know, Commissioner, Mayor, Commissioners, thank you for this evening, take time. Recognize our public works employees that are standing before you. Many of these employees have been reporting to work daily ever since the start of the pandemic over a year ago, working through new requirements of masks, additional cleaning, social distancing, all at the same time performing and producing the same quality output needed for the community. These employees are essential to the quality of life for our residents and visitors to Manhattan. These essential employees are the ones awake in the middle of the night, dealing with water main breaks, sewer backups, frozen water meters, snow and ice operations, closing floodgates, operating the flood pumps. Mechanics make sure the motors, pumps, whether it's at the water treatment plant or wastewater treatment plant, working day and night to either deliver fresh and safe drinking water to our customers or collecting that used water, treating it, and putting it back into the environment cleaner than the water runoff that comes down the Kansas River today. This group tonight represents numerous divisions, provide these essential services to the community. Without their dedication to this profession, many things would not work correctly and be sustainable to the density of our population as community. The divisions represented tonight include the water treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant, water distribution crews, sanitary sewer maintenance crews, traffic division, signs and markings, engineering, surveyors, CAD techs, construction inspectors, street division, fleet division, and stormwater crew. Again, I want to say thank you to the mayor for this proclamation, recognition for National Public Works Week. We were also able to get him on the Kansas chapter present. Governor Kelly is also kind enough to recognize across the state of Kansas, proclamation for all public works. And so it's not just our community of folks in this profession working hard, especially during the pandemic, but all across the state of Kansas, so, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, excellent. I want to personally thank everybody in the public works. I mean, we've got a first-class city. Rob gets all the calls. Got him a little stress thing.
It's the last, it's the last orange cone. Thank you.
Okay, and we have another proclamation, National Preservation Month. I think we've got Linda, Linda here for this.
Last call. Thank you so much. I wanted to make the point tonight that historic preservation operates in a network environment. Public and private entities all contribute. Locally, we have the Manhattan Riley County Preservation Alliance, local preservation ordinances, Historic Resources Board and associated staff with the city, Kansas State University College of Architecture, Riley County Historical Society, and our local architects. At the state level, we have the Kansas Preservation Alliance, Friends of Historic Preservation, state preservation statutes, the Kansas Tax Credit Program, and state Historic Preservation Office with the Historic Sites Board of Review. At the national level, we have the National Trust for Historic Preservation, our national laws and executive orders. And there are 17 federal agencies that are aligned with historic preservation, and they can all be seen at preserveamerica.org. So, thank you.
Whereas local historic preservation is an effective tool for revitalizing neighborhoods and commercial cores, fostering local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. Historic preservation is an effective economic development tool with nearly $4 million in tax credits issued to historic rehabilitation projects in Manhattan, leveraging over $19 million of total investment in historic resources. The Manhattan community continues to demonstrate its commitment to preservation as it grows and develops through ongoing historic and archaeological surveys, the nomination of significant cultural resources to the local, state, and national register of historic places, the conservation of its traditional neighborhoods, the integration of historic elements with redevelopment, and the recognition, rehabilitation, and restoration of historic properties. Now therefore, Lynn Butler, Mayor of the City of Manhattan, Kansas, do hereby proclaim May 2021 as National Preservation Month.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Kevin, for being here.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Do you have anything to say?
Yeah, you've got a full agenda, but I would like to thank city staff, and specifically Ben Schmeele. He really works hard with the HRB.
Next on the agenda is Commissioner comments. Will we start with Commissioner Reddy?
Yes, thank you. This is Commissioner Reddy. First of all, I just wanted to say you have until noon, June 1st, to file for, running for local office, whether it's a city position or the Board of Education. You know, we're always looking for good candidates to run. Not too many qualifications, more than a residential space or geographically in age. We hope a lot of people do participate in the process and want to be candidates and run for office. If not, you can always be on an advisory board. We're also looking for a lot of people to fill our vacancies on advisory boards. We want to congratulate all the high school students and university graduates that graduated this weekend. The weather wasn't so great on Sunday, but it certainly was on Friday and Saturday, and either way, everybody graduated. So congratulations, and thank you to the university students that spent their time in the community, in the Manhattan community, and chose Kansas State University to go to school. Of course, we are having a regular meeting today, no masks, and we are certainly not six feet apart. We are very close and tight, and it's exciting to be back to some type of normalcy. And we hope, you know, you're always welcome to join our meetings in person, and hopefully, once again, you choose to come and partake in the process. Vaccines are going to be, for the youth, there is a youth vaccine clinic on Thursday, May 20th. Appointments are still available. Go on to the Riley County Health Department and go ahead and sign up. This is for ages 12 through 17, from 9:00 to 4:00 PM at Potteroff Hall at Seco Park. And the student needs to be accompanied by a parent or a legal guardian for the shot. So please take advantage of it, 9 to 4 o'clock, and there's lots of available slots, and we hope the entire community gets vaccinated, and hopefully, we can get to 60, 75% vaccinations. Thank you.
Just a quick comment. I have the opportunity to work with, I was contacted by the Kdad's Commissioner of Behavioral Health to start working on a suicide prevention plan for veterans and military. And so in the next, over the summer, Janet Nichols from the Chamber of Military and Military Affairs Liaison for the Manhattan Chamber of Commerce is working with us to put a plan together. So keep, keep a watch for that as new details come out. And the other thing that I was able to be part of is the ATA board met and discussed some changes to their composition. ATA being our transportation, our buses for the city. And we are, there's a couple separations to the board there, and Junction City is being, moving over to a different part of the board, but we'll still have some unity in conversations through their nonprofit that ATA has. The other thing that's important, I know the city manager had mentioned it this morning, is that when you do ride a public bus in Manhattan, you are going to be required to wear a mask because it is considered federal property, and that is a federal regulation that they are stuck in a position where they have to enforce. So if you're, if you're going to need to ride a bus, just try to remember to have a mask because the, the staff really don't want to be denying you a ride for not having a mask. Thanks.
Let me get that button on. Want to make one, you know, follow-on comment. As Commissioner Estebrook mentioned, you know, this, this idea of having to wear a mask on a bus, that's a federal requirement, and it could affect funding. And so everybody just needs to cooperate. You know, if you're going to ride the bus, just put the mask on. It makes it easier for the, for the drivers and those folks that do that. I've got a couple friends that drive the buses, and they're not looking forward to having to, you know, be the heavy-handed guy to enforce that. And that goes along with everything else in the town now, too, because any business, you know, has the liberty of requiring a mask. I think I saw a coffee shop had a sign on it that said, "No mask, no service." And if they choose to do that, they have the right to do that. And so I just would like everybody to just cooperate. If you're going to go into those facilities that have those signs, then please wear the mask because they have the right to do that. And if you don't want to wear the mask, then you have the ability to go somewhere else. So I think we need to move on to the next phase of this thing, and if we all cooperate, I think things will work out just, just fine. So next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Now, we didn't have any speakers sign up in advance for this. So the items on the consent agenda are those of a routine and housekeeping nature, or those items which have previously been reviewed by the city commission. The commissioner may request an item be moved to the end of the consent agenda. Does the commission have any questions or comments on any consent agenda item?
The letters. I'm recusing myself for the two that relate to the housing authority.
Do any other commissioner comments?
That would be item P, right? Oh, both, all of them.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to make a public comment on any of the consent agenda items? Okay, seeing no public comment and no further commissioner comments, we can entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mayor, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. City clerk, could you please call the roll?
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Commissioner Morse?
Yes.
Commissioner Hassel?
Yes.
Commissioner Estebrook?
Yes, and I abstain from item D, number two, and P.
And Commissioner Reddy?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero with the exception of items D and P, which carries four to zero to one, with Commissioner Estebrook abstaining.
Okay, now we'll move on to the general agenda, which is to, first item is to consider first reading of an ordinance, rezoning Lot 35, Eureka Edition, Unit 2, from C-6 AO, Heavy Commercial District with Airport Overlay District, to I-3 AO, Light Industrial District with Airport Overlay District. And I guess Chad Bungier, Assistant Director of Community Development, will fill us in on the details.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Chad Bungier with the Community Development Department. And I'll walk you through this stuff memo. As you mentioned, this is a track, or excuse me, a lot out in the Eureka Edition on the extreme southwest edge of the city. It's an island area that is within the city limits. Come on now. I didn't know that blinked, sorry. So, Eureka Edition off of Eureka Drive and the Horseshoe of Eureka Terrace. We're looking at this track that's outlined in red here. Currently, it's vacant in regards to not having any permanent structures on it, although Larson Construction across the street owns the property and has been storing equipment and materials on the site for some time. It's Zone C-6, Heavy Retail, which is a commercial district designed for sale of implement, you know, farm implement, construction equipment, those sort of things, lumber yards, et cetera. But unfortunately, it was, it is, and none of the permitted uses allow for storage of equipment. And thus, addressing an issue with the use, they've requested the rezoning for the site. So the future land use map shows that industrial area, or that area as all industrial. When it was developed and zoned originally, it and the properties to the east of the Horseshoe were Zone C-6 with the airport overlay. That airport overlay, just for your information, is a zoning district within the city that's designed to address height issues so that the area remains compatible with the airport. So we don't put anything up into the, into the approach zones for the airport, as well as some noise factors for residential, but that doesn't apply here. Anyhow, majority of the site was rezoned to PED for the concrete plant, so really, we just have two remaining areas of C-6. Obviously, Larson Construction is not intending to sell any farm implement, heavy construction or anything, so they've requested the rezoning to address the issue and allow it to continue for storage for their equipment. It will be screened per the I-2 Industrial District requirements, but it's fairly straightforward zoning. This item was heard by the Planning Board two weeks ago on May 3rd, and they recommended approval of the request to rezone, as well as us with city staff recommend approval based on the findings in the staff report. So fairly straightforward request, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Okay, if there's any questions from the commission, feel free.
So basically, they're just legitimizing what they've been using it for anyway.
That's correct.
There you go.
You should give these presentations. Meetings will go much quicker.
This is a good fit with what's already there.
It really is.
I mean, it's just a build-out of that cul-de-sac. Or not build-out in this case, but...
Yep.
And because there's nothing at a higher level around there, industrial storage is okay.
Yeah, correct. And there's storage units to the west of it. So it's, it's really compatible, just a matter of switching a district for, in the area.
And there's nobody here to object, so that's another good point.
Not bad.
Yeah, there were no speakers signed up in advance, and if there's anyone in the audience that wishes to speak to the topic, doesn't appear to be, so we don't have any public comment. So if there's no further discussion...
Mayor, I would move that we accept the Manhattan Urban Area Planning Board's recommendation and approve first reading of an ordinance rezoning Lot 35, Eureka Edition, Unit 2, and approximately 2.84 acre lot generally located at the south end of Eureka Terrace from C-6 Airport Overlay, Heavy Commercial District with Airport Overlay District, to Industrial I-3 with overlay, Airport Overlay, Light Industrial District with Airport Overlay, based on the findings in the staff report. The end.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. City clerk, can you please call the roll?
Fisher Morse?
Yes.
Fisher Hassel?
Yes.
Fisher Estebrook?
Yes.
Fisher Reddy?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, then we can move on to item B, which is to discuss the draft Manhattan Development Code and review of Articles 26 and 27, and Chad, you get to do a further presentation.
Yes. There's a good chance you'll be tired of seeing me with these presentations of overviews of the development code. But we have just a few more left of the articles to get through with you and the Planning Board. They're kind of mirroring each other. We also have a couple of meetings with the Ordinance Advisory Committee, and starting tomorrow, we'll have my first stakeholders meeting with a group in town to give an overview, and then we'll continue discussion. So we're really, I'm going to take this off since no one's that close to me, so... We are really talking this up, I guess you could say, to the point that hopefully people will get tired of hearing it and be excited to get it adopted, just so they stop listening to me. But we're going to cover two topics tonight. One, the first article, Article 26, Environmental Standards, is our floodplain regulations. Not a great deal has changed in that. The first section of this, 6A, is really the authorizations and how we establish floodplain districts and all the items that FEMA with the National Flood Insurance Program and the state requires us to have in our flood, in our floodplain regulations. So there's good information here, but a lot of it is boilerplate requirements from other state and federal agencies. And 6B is where all the development standards are. I can talk about all the items great out there, but I feel in the interest of time and how much I've chatted with you about flood stuff. I have some slides prepared, but if you'd like me to, I could, they're hidden, and just jump to the last one, which is our tenant flood hazard notification. All the great items are largely not going to change. We adopted those regulations in 2015, and they are, I would say, the highest standards we have in the state in terms of floodplain regulations and the most comprehensive. So super proud of them, happy to chat with them, but I could chat a long time about them. To kind of set the stage, need to explain our flood zones again real quick. The white hatch mark is our floodway. That's a FEMA standard from the FEMA models. The blue outside of that hatch mark is the FEMA 1% annual chance floodplain or the 100-year, again, required to participate in the National Flood Insurance Program. And then the yellow area is our future conditions. If you recall, we, we created that floodplain after our floods in 2011 to give more information to folks of what could happen in future floods. And then we also took the opportunity to set floodplain regulations, both within the area. So if you are within the edges of the cross-section of that yellow area, you need to conform to our floodplain regulations. And then we also have attributed flood elevations there also. So you have to be, new construction has to be higher or built to that flood elevation, or a little higher, actually, a foot above, to make sure we stay high and dry for today's floods as well as the future. Wanted to point that out to give you a visual context of this tenant flood notice.
So Chad?
Yes, ma'am.
The area that you've shown divided by Highway, add on Seth Child, 113, does that take into account the absence of all those buildings there on the west side that have been demolished?
No.
No.
It does not, yeah. So the model does not get updated all that much. If it does, it's lot by lot. When someone asks FEMA to consider their property out of a floodplain in one way or another, either by fill or by mistake of the flood.
They want to be an exception, yeah.
Right. So anything still shown today without that letter of change, map change, regardless of what has been built there, is still in that floodplain.
Do you have a map that shows other parts of the city? I'm thinking about the Northview area.
I do not, although we could hop online and, and pull up a map.
I would be interested personally in doing that. I don't mean to take up time here, but I don't want to let a flood opportunity go by without that discussion. So I, why don't I talk to you separate, well, okay, go ahead.
I, I can, we can talk offline if you like. I thought you were giving me directive to get that map. Okay. But yes.
I want to know about it. I don't know that I, I'm not, I mean, what you've told us is nothing has really changed from when we adopted the flood regulations, standards. So that, that is, that's reassuring, and thank you.
Yep. And that future conditions, if you recall, we did it along Wildcat Creek and all of its tributaries because that's where we saw flooding. It's an uncontrolled area, and it's a growth area in general for the city, especially going out west. And then we did the Marlet Ditch because that was another growth area. Anywhere else, so primarily the built-out areas in Northview, the Dix Edition, the, the, those are all built out. We did not do, we did not create a future conditions model there, but what we did was... But what we did was add a wide or a taller freeboard. So, here it is one foot above the flood elevation in that yellow area.
Okay.
In the Dick's Edition, in the Northview area, absent of the future conditions, we require two feet of freeboard. So, we, we added that in. It's built out unless there was a substantial redevelopment of that area, nothing's really going to change hydrologically that we could have anticipated for. So, we added that two foot freeboard.
I'd like to see how it affects the, the northern part of Northview too, because we always, ninety-three took the goose for Dick's Edition in the south part, but we've allowed a lot of building in the north part. So, I want to, and as if the Blue River repeats the nineteen ninety-three level, you know, I, I'm just interested in seeing that whole picture.
Happy to show you, and we have some pretty cool flood models there that, that paints that picture pretty well, so. Okay, so that sets a stage of what we're talking about for our floodplains. The resilient Wildcat Creek to one way or another asked for this notice. You certainly have asked for this notice, and so here you go. The language has changed a little bit and from the draft presentation and memo that you were given, thanks to Katie, I had updated it a bit. But the idea here is that any landlord or, or agent authorized to lease or rent property either in residential or non-residential, so we're talking any property where someone can rent with a structure within that community special flood hazard area. So, all our mapped high-risk floodplains would need to notify a prospective tenant of that flood risk. And in the standards, it spells out just, you know, what the minimums are there that they could flood, that flood insurance is available even for tenants, and that, you know, there could be life, loss of property or life because of the flood risk. And we chose all properties rather than a dwelling or a house because floods do not follow lines on map, maps very well. And so, there could have, be a parking lot, or we have a bigger flood than what the maps show, and someone, you know, has a drowned out car or they get injured. And so, we put a pretty big, broad approach to it. This will not be a, an amendment to the lease. It'll be a separate document, completely separate from that contract between the landlord and that potential tenant, but we envision it goes along in that process. We'll provide a sample notice to those landlords or agents to use if they choose, or they can make their own. It just, the ordinance would spell out the, the few things that they need to state in that. We'll notify routinely those folks that need to do this through risk reductions, rental registration. We have a really good list there as well as fire inspection records for the, for the non-residential properties, make sure that they're kept informed about this requirement. And this last piece, I think, is pretty important, just so you understand that because of the sheer mass of what we're doing and some of our systems that we, I guess, don't have in place, this will be on a complaint basis, and we won't be able to proactively check this or enforce this. So, you need to be aware of that. But if, if we get called and said, hey, I heard my landlord was supposed to give me this document, they didn't, what am I supposed to do? We'll enforce it that way through a normal zoning violation, which we have the enforcement standards written in later chapter or later articles, so.
I want to ask one question.
Yeah.
Now, we have this rental registration site, and it, it's got the locations of the properties on the map. Would it be possible to just indicate with some color or something on that map to say that's in the floodplain?
It could, yeah, definitely could.
And I mean, that wouldn't be enforcement, but it would just be another, you know, emphasis if you're, you're the person renting that or you're the person that owns it, that, okay, the city knows it's in there, we expect you to do this.
Right.
I don't think that would be real burdensome on the staff to do that, but if you can investigate that, that might be helpful.
Yeah, and actually, that's how we plan to do it on the landlord or the property agent's side is we'll overlay those address points from the rental registry into our floodplain map on GIS and be able to select those properties that need it. So, we'll be able to pinpoint this property is in the floodplain, that property's not, and, and so we won't shotgun it. We will, we will direct notification to those, those landlords or those property owners that they need to do that, so that's a good idea.
Okay, and I think this is one of the big improvements we wanted. We've been waiting on this one for a while, so.
Yeah.
Glad to see it in there, and, and I think it, it's going to help so we don't get folks surprised, which happened in the past.
It has.
Happy to see that.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So, we're going to notify the property owners as those are identified, like you just described, but what about the, just the physical properties themselves receiving notice?
So, elaborate on that a little bit for me.
So, this catches if you're going to sign a lease.
Correct.
It doesn't catch if you've already signed a lease.
Correct.
So, what I'm saying is how do we notify the people, or could we, if we're going to be mailing it to the properties, why not throw in just everybody in the zone and it goes to those addresses? As a notice that this is, this is the change, and of course, if you're the property owner, you're supposed to do that on your leases, but if you're a tenant, then at least you've been notified.
Yeah, that's a good idea, and we, we have tried in the past some outreach that way. It becomes fairly expensive with mailings and those sort of things, but we're always looking for ideas on how to keep people informed that they're in a flood zone. This handles the rental side, which we've never really addressed, did some national research. Lawrence is one community that has done it, and that is about it. State of Oklahoma has a very loose program and the state of California, but from talking with other floodplain managers across the country, no one really does this. So, this will fill a pretty big need for us and be fairly unique in the country. And then the homeowner's side of things, that covers it with their disclosure with the real estate. So, I like the idea of, you know, spreading it out to properties. We just have to look at the cost and those sort of things because doing that annually could get somewhat expensive.
Or as a water bill?
Yeah.
Not just annually, but just the one time since everything, every lease after this should be.
Right.
Read notify, the landlords should be doing that, but this first time, they probably won't go back and notify them.
Yeah. Yep.
You also have the email addresses for those rental registrat, those, those landlords that register through there, at least, you know, the majority of them.
Right.
And you contact them other, for other things through that system, so this is a logical.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, I think it'll be a pretty easy lift for us once we get it going.
I just don't want to run into a big landlord that doesn't know anything about it.
Right. There, there will probably be some, but we're going to try our hardest to keep everyone informed, and if they're checking mails or emails, then we'll, we'll accomplish that. Okay, moving on, then on to Article seven, site development. This is a set of art, set of chapters or sections that I'm fairly excited about. Our staff has done some really good work, and I think it'll be fairly impactful for our community in a number of different ways. The first, First Division seven A is kind of a collect-all of random standards. The first one I'll point out is permitted encroachments. We have that already, a list of exceptions of, of when you can put a, a front step into a front yard setback or a back patio, those sort of things. We've expanded that list to some things that we have admit, you know, just naturally have accomplished or allowed over time, like air conditioning units and egress windows, those sort of things. But we've changed our measurement standards in the, in the definition section, which we'll get to later. And so, it'll be a little bit impactful in that we will now be measuring setbacks to the building facade. Our current regulation is fairly vague in how it's defined, and over the decades, it's caused some confusion. One group, one group of administrators will define it to the foundation. Another two, it's roof overhang. Currently, we measure to that furthest extent of the roof. But with the development code, we're clearly specifying we're going to measure it to the building facade and allow for some minor encroachments of roof overhangs, bay windows, those sort of things, which the building code already allows to happen. And so, it'll look a little like we're, we're giving too much away, I guess, if you wanted to look at that way, but really, it brings a lot of stuff in line. It makes the world just a whole lot easier to, to measure, brings a lot of things into conformance, and so that's a big step for us.
So, you're not going to allow a, a whole patio with a roof and call that an overhang?
Correct. I mean, in general, we, we do have, like, for instance, the established neighborhood overlay, which we looked at with the site design, or yes, the design standards.
This is an overhang.
Right. We allow for some of those built into that district because we want to encourage porches and those sort of things, but generally, an enclosed porch or those sort of things.
Not enclosed, it could be an open, but it's got the roof.
Yeah. Some of that will be allowed somewhat, it kind of depends on the circumstance.
Depends on, I mean, you said minor, so I am interpreting that as a small overhang, you know, which is.
Yeah, it won't be excessive.
All right.
I could, I can look it up for you if you'd like.
No, I just, I want to go with minor.
And I can define minor, but yeah. So, those are going to be some things that, that just relax a fairly harsh set of standards that I think will be. Jared, what I do here? Hit okay? All right, just a Zoom meeting, okay. Gotcha, very good. The other piece, this is something Public Works was really desiring, was a site grading plan, and so, especially on the, the west side of town in more hillier areas, we've had a number of localized draining issues where one house may be up on the hill or up on the grade a little higher, and the other site doesn't match that grade or they don't account for it well with site drainage and has caused a lot of problems over the years with erosion, basements feeding water, et cetera. And so, we will be requiring site grading plans pretty much for any development in town, but it is going to be a little bit tailored or stair-stepped. So, for subdivisions less than an acre, any non-residential of, I think it's a half acre, and then any single-family house will require a simple site development plan, which basically we want the corners of the building, the, the elevation, proposed elevation of the corner of the buildings and kind of the site grade of what that, you know, lands to be. That way, we can accommodate it or match it with the neighbors, so we don't have a house way up here and another one way down here, and all the water comes to the neighbor. The larger developments, bigger, bigger subdivisions, commercial developments, those sort of things, we will have a much more detailed plan of where the utilities are, where the on and off-site flow lines are, those sort of things, because those will be much bigger impacts to the whole overall watershed or sub watershed. So, that's something that Public Works has been wanting for a while. We've had, like I said, a number of issues in the past, so this will be a, a good step for that. And in fact, a couple of other, as we were discussing through this, some engineering firms thought this was a, a positive move too. Parking's a big change for us, and I'll probably soapbox on this a little bit, so hopefully not too much, but these are a number of the changes to the policies we've made. The big first thing is we've increased the number of classified uses. Today, we have thirty-five, thirty-seven. They're pretty broad, they're, they're either really broad that people have to do interpretations of this restaurant, meet that use spelled out in our current regulations, or they're very specific. And so, what we've done is we've added more in hopes that we can find more pigeonholes, if you will, or, or more cubbyholes to put uses in and make things a lot easier. So, instead of saying, hey, I, my classic example is I want to open a hookah shop in town. I don't, one, don't know what a hookah shop is and how it relates to a bar or coffee shop or a restaurant, so we have to figure that out, and then we have to figure out the parking, and so by having more uses defined, we'll be able to, the developer, the business owner will be able to quickly just say, that's my use. I'm restaurant, that's the number of parking spaces I need. So, it's going to be more words, it's going to be more pages, but I think it's ultimately going to be a whole lot easier to use. And then plugging that into ENCODE, you'll just type in the land use you want, and ENCODE will pull up your parking requirement in that, once we get that built out. From there, we took some guiding principles on how we wanted to draft our new parking standards. The first one being that the minimum parking should be minimal. Right now, I don't think they're all that minimal, and they can be pretty burdensome to developers and to business owners. And so, what we wanted to do in general is put the minimum, pretty minimal, and let the business owner or the developer figure out what their situation should, and we trust them that they're not going to underpark themselves because that doesn't help their business. If, if I only provide two parking spaces, but I need thirty, that doesn't help them at all. So, that was the first big principle in helping us create these parking standards. Kind of repeating that again, minimum's minimum. It's, it's just that lowest bar, and then everything else can be added on to by that property owner or that business owner. Right now, what we do is we look at several big, thick books, and it all has these weird, random parking studies but done by engineers that have wildly wide standard of error, and we just pick a number we like, maybe add to ten percent if we're doing something new. And you know, that doesn't really work for a business all the time, and so we're going to trust our, our community members, our business owners, to figure out what they need. We'll have our minimum bar, and they can get there where they need it. We are providing maximums, which is a new thing for us. Not all businesses do this, but there are certainly some national and regional big and mid-box stores that are fairly notorious for having a template, having a standard regional business model that, you know, they, they plug in a lot of parking spaces, and I don't know if they're always used, and we could maybe use that land more efficiently. And also, it has a, it contributes to a lot of sprawl, traffic congestion, has some environmental impacts with runoff and, and those sort of things. And so, this is kind of how we set the, the idea of a maximum parking requirement for some uses, not all uses. So, for instance, Walmart here on the left, Aggieville, the core of Aggieville to your right, almost the same size, and when you compare the Walmarts to the Aggievilles and downtowns, per square foot, we get a lot more bang for the buck for the community. Now, by no means am I saying that every place should look like Aggieville or downtown, but I think it suggests that we could use our land more efficiently. We could have more building space devoted to employment, devoted to sales and services, and those sort of things, rather than having as much or more of a parking lot versus the building. And so, those are kind of some directives. The other piece about parking is that it has some social impacts to us. It costs us, and so, these are a little dated, but I think that the trend holds true that in Manhattan, that average dwelling unit costs about eight hundred eighty bucks a month, and according to the study, one parking space is fifty-six bucks a month. So, you know, if that's a four-bedroom apartment, there's two hundred dollars that go directly to that, that rent, in theory at least. And so, it adds to our bottom line of our, our tenants in their, in their affordability. And we have some proof behind that. In two thousand fifteen, when we were developing the urban core residential, this area along Manhattan and Blument, we went out and did a parking study of our own. So, we had a long-range planner and a planning intern get up in six o'clock every morning in February and six o'clock every night in February to count on-street parking as well as what parking was in the parking lots in all these apartments in this area. And what we found was, you know, every bedroom does not need a parking space for it, and so we've lowered our minimum apartment requirements to that, to that effect. But it just shows that, um, people have, uh, not as many vehicles as, as we once had. This is some information from the census, uh, most current information. And it shows slowly, uh, Manhattanites are having less vehicles. Uh, we were, we were up there in the early two thousands, but slowly, um, we're having less and less cars in our driveways and our parking lots. And more and more renters, uh, and owners don't have a car at all. They're finding other ways to get around town, walking, biking, uh, those sort of things. So, all that said, it leads us up to the notion that we don't need to have as much parking. And I'm gonna hop off my soapbox, I guess now, and just show that we've started to drop those minimum standards, um, comparatively, to allow those, uh, allow more efficient use and allow those property owners to best use their, their site. Skipping through that. And then, I'd mentioned the environmental impacts, uh, here's a couple of examples. Um, the biggest in my head is runoff and then, um, you know, a whole slate of asphalt creates a pretty hot, hot May in summer, I'm sweating as it is now, so that guy doesn't need any more heat, um, in the city. Uh, and so, um, this last principle is that we put those maximums pretty high, so that we don't have a lot of people asking for requests. So, in a short nutshell, minimum's minimum, maximum's maximum, and people could figure out how to work it in between. That's best for them. We also plugged in a change of use policy, uh, something we haven't had, and it has caused some issues in the past. So if I'm taking a fairly low parking, uh, intensity use, say, insurance office, that insurance company moves out, I'm gonna replace it, uh, with a doctor's office that has a higher intense use. If I didn't have that parking count just what it is for that doctor's office, that doctor can't move into that business and that, that tenant space remains vacant. So, we've created a, a minimum change of use requirement that, that allows some flexibility in that, up to twice the amount, um, just so we can have better uses of our properties and, and the city doesn't have to say, sorry, you can't be there because you don't have eighteen parking spots, or whatever the case may be. We have some caps, so you can't have something very low and then something very intense come in and blow up the whole system, if you will. But we're trying to be accommodating, because we know it's an issue. We've allowed, uh, compact spaces, that's a new thing for us. Uh, more efficient use of those parking lot designs, something that we've been needing for a while. Moving on, the bicycle parking, or, um, we have a great bicycle po- culture in town. Um, a lot of hard work by our advocates in the community, the Bicycle Pedestrian Committee, and then, uh, our staff and the staff from the Metropolitan Planning Organization. And so, we've done a lot of great things and we have a lot of great things ahead of us, that deserve to have, uh, dedicated bicycle parking for them. Uh, it makes cyclists feel welcome, uh, it legitimizes it. We don't have bikes chained to trees and park benches and, and those sort of things. We've had bicycle parking in the community for a while, in our multi-family redevelopment overlay district and recently, in our Urban Core Residential, so it's not a new thing. We heard a few grumblings from those apartment owners, but hopefully, uh, they've come to appreciate it and now they don't have bikes hanging off, um, you know, uh, front porches and those sort of things that, that it's maintained orderly. So, generally speaking, we'll require bicycle parking, minimal bicycle parking across the city. Uh, I think it's four or less residential use, dwelling use, or four or less dwellings. Um, we won't require that parking, so single-family, we're not gonna require that. Duplexes, you know, those smaller, uh, residential, uh, we won't. But this is generally the parking standard. Uh, I mentioned that there. And we do have our preferred bike rack design, it's the most effective, uh, in locking up, securing a bo- a bike as well as the most efficient use of the area. But I think we have a caveat in there, if someone wants to propose a different design, we'll allow that to happen as long as it meets our, our, um, you know, the, the objectives of it's secure and it's safe and those sort of things. And then, we have it laid out, you know, some standards of, um, where next to the entrance, where you're not obstructing walkways, those sort of things. A couple of other things, we do have drive-through designs. Uh, we've had a slew of new drive-throughs in the community, uh, and it highlighted our need to, uh, better define that stacking space, uh, for those drive-throughs, escape lanes, where to put menu boards, so it doesn't echo into a neighborhood, those sort of things. So that's in there. And then, pretty minor thing, but I, hopefully, it, it highlights how we're being a little bit forward-thinking is that we have allowed, uh, electric vehicle charging stations, uh, as an accessory to that parking lot. So not a huge thing, but, you know, we are looking ahead of what could be, uh, a positive trend. Trees and landscape is the next section. I, I say this a lot, uh, but I mean it, is that we really just wanted to set that minimum bar. And so, we're not asking, uh, for anything more lush or, or more exotic than what is already being built in our commu- or installed in our community today in terms of foundation plannings, parking lot plannings, those sort of things. But we are setting that minimum bar, um, just to have a, an attractive community that, that has shade and, and provides some places for birds to hang out and those sort of things, uh, bees to roam. We will require a landscape plan for all, uh, multi-family structures with five or more dwellings and an all non-residential development, um, and that's just to ensure, uh, compliance. So here's a few images, this would be your foundation planning requirement, your parking lot requirement for trees and, and landscape areas there. Ours today are pretty minimal, so this will be a big jump up, but it's not gonna be, uh, anything uh, beyond what's being installed today across the community with new development.
You have a percentage currently. Uh, you ca- you have to have so much of a, of a property in green space. Or, and so, how is that affected by this?
Uh, it'll be a little bit more, the, so there's a couple of things.
Like thirty percent is what comes to mind, but I don't know, I can't remember for sure.
Yeah, so, in the, it's, we do have a standard of how much, uh, open space, yard area needs to be in front of houses and apartment buildings, that's seventy-five percent. This is gonna be more for, uh, commercial developments and those sort of things where we have a almost nothing standard now. Uh, I think it's five percent area, five percent of parking lots need to be landscaped, which isn't much.
That's why we have a lot of runoff, huh?
It's, yeah, and so, again, not, we're not trying to just impose island oasis through all of our community. Uh, really just having that minimum bar set and it's gonna be right at what's been developed in the last five years. Uh, let's see, signs, uh, pretty much left unchanged, we adopted those in two thousand fifteen. Largely, no need to change those. The two issues, we did need to update our temporary signs to address a, uh, Supreme Court decision a few years back, uh, regarding political signs. So, today, our regulations define a broad variety of, um, temporary signs. We have political signs, for sale, for rent, banners, those sort of things. And the latest Supreme Court case said you can't treat any of those, uh, temporary signs differently. Our regulations largely don't, um, but just to be on the safe side, we stripped all reference to those different kind of, um, temporary signs and just blanket temporary signs. So it could be a political sign, a for-rent sign, a banner, advertising, whatever. They're all gonna be treated the same, but they're just not gonna be specified in any manner. So, just a, a semantics change really, in, in regard to our standards, cause we largely treated them the same. And then, we are allowing for digital off-adver- off-site advertising signs or digital billboards. They're not allowed currently, we've had a work session or two on them. Um, we're gonna largely allow them as, in terms of characteristics, as our current onsite digital signs, in terms of brightness and quality, those sort of things. Can't have moving video boards, TV screens, you know, they have to be static images, immediate transition, so no zooms and zips and those sort of things. Uh, we have profo- proposed a turnover rate. Um, the company that originally asked us to consider this had a lower, um, uh, turnover rate, uh, and, and we can move that, I don't, I'm not married to twenty seconds. Uh, although, the industry standard, when it comes to planners at least, is a fairly complicated calculation of, uh, site distance from the roadway to where that sign is, the, and then the, um, vehicle, uh, speed, the posted speed there. And I did some assumptions of site distance and then those speeds, and they all came out to about twenty seconds, fifteen to twenty seconds, so we landed on twenty seconds, since this is new for us. But if, if the community or the commission or the planning board felt we should increase it or lower it, we certainly can.
What is our turnover rate now?
So for, uh, onsite, it's, uh, a sixty-second turnover rate.
So that would change to twenty?
Yeah, probably. We haven't, I don't think we've addressed that, but it makes logical sense that if we do that for billboards, we do it for a restaurant sign.
And off-site would be twenty also?
Yes.
Okay, that's what you're really talking about?
Right, off-site is the billboards.
Okay.
Well, the thing is, is that if you start thinking by the time you see a sign, even if it's a block away, and depending on how fast you're going, obviously, twenty seconds, you're probably still gonna see the same. If it starts right before, when you can see it, you'll probably be past it before it changes.
Yeah.
And so, I, I would, yeah, I'd be tempted even drop it a little bit lower even, um, simply because, yeah, thirty seconds is never, it's never gonna, you'll never see the second message if you're just driving by and, yeah, how long's it take to go a block before something? And so, yeah, keep it, I, yeah, do not go any longer than the twenty, cause even, it's hard to, just to make much of an impact if you're trying to get multiple messages to people that way, so.
Yep, and that's the logic is, the logic behind that, that calculation is, um, that maybe the business that's advertising, or the businesses advertising one, that same car to see the signs, you know, see multiple messages. But the, the logic behind the calculation is, uh, if a driver is looking at it and then automatically, or, or quickly it shifts, it's going to be distracting to that driver. So you want it long enough a- and the site distance is long enough that, that vehicle never sees a message change, um, so that it's not a distraction. So you don't go, whoa, that just said, you know, I wanna go see the chiropractor now, says I wanna go see the, you know, whatever business.
There used to be a Briggs sign out toward the airport, that was a scroll feed.
Yeah.
And it was really bright, and some like that are in Wamigo, uh, that just flash at you.
Yeah.
And those are things that, uh, are really distracting. It's hard to drive by there and not look at it, which is their whole plan. But, there's a safety feature there where you, you should be driving your car and not trying to read a s- message that's typing out, uh, so.
Yep.
I, I, uh, and the other thing that is, uh, concerns me, on McCall Road, there's a, there are two, I think, uh, signs that are digital and they're static and they don't change too often. But at night, sometimes they get really bright. And it, it just takes your, uh, eyes off the road to the point that it's blinding. And so, I encourage people to call the code office and have them enforce the NIPS, what's the right name?
Nits.
Nits, that's it, uh, because those businesses have cranked that up way too far.
Yep, yep.
Are you dealing with the Nits, by the way?
I think we still are, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are you?
Not that I know how to measure.
You're not increasing the brightness, okay, alright, thank you.
And they do have to be self-dimming, so.
Self-what?
Dimming, so, um, the idea is, uh, brighter during the daylight hours and darker at night.
Dark and dim, dimmer, more dim at night, yeah, yeah, okay.
The other piece, um, and this was suggested by the, the business owner asking us to do this, was, uh, a removal criteria. So for every new digital sign, we would require, uh, three standard billboards to come offline, to re-remove someplace in town. In the code, we have suggested downtown and Aggieville, to me, those are pedestrian areas. They have a couple of billboards there that seem to be, um, inappropriate for the environment that we're trying to design there or, or have designed there, uh, but it's just a suggestion. But we are, um, to, to avoid the, uh, cluttering of our roadways with just more si- with more billboards, we're requiring, um, three signs, standard signs that come offline for each digital sign to go up. And the, the business owner, I don't believe they own those signs anymore, but they were, they're agreeable to that, to that logic, so.
Chad, this is Commissioner Reddy. Explain to me, explain that to me just one more time. Are we talking about the same business?
Well.
Yeah, the digital sign to remove three of their own signs, or the business district removes three signs if they have a digital sign? What does that mean, that three standard signs for each digital, digital sign? I'm confused if, just by one business or a district.
In Manhattan, we're fortunate to, uh, only have two businesses have static billboards across the city, right now at least. And ninety-nine percent of those are owned by one business. Uh, so the intent here is, um, the reality is that, uh, that one business would need to remove three of their signs. We don't specify in the regulations. So, in theory, I guess, if that one business owner that owns the one sign wanted to put a digital up, they would have to maneuver by two other signs, um, from the competitor or whatever, but, um, there's a, monopoly's not the right word to use, but there is a f- corner on that market, uh, by one business owner.
Yeah, I understand.
And so.
That's what I was trying to get clarification about. So is this the appropriate place to put that then? Uh, um, like, one day, we may have more of.
In theory, yeah. We've, I think generally speaking, uh, in terms of that eight-hundred-foot distance between billboards, we're fairly saturated, because they can only go in so many residential, or excuse me, commercial districts and be so close together. So I think, uh, unless we go and upzone a lot of areas, we're fairly well saturated that you couldn't, um, put too many more billboards, or you really couldn't put any more billboards in the community, so.
Okay.
We're, we're generally speaking, set with what we got.
Okay, so it doesn't say billboards per se, does it? Is there a difference between a standard sign and a billboard?
I should've put billboard in there, I ran out of space. So when I say sign, I mean that off-site advertising or billboard sign.
Might be good just to be more clear about that.
Sure, 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 sorry about that.
Just, because until you said billboard, I was just thinking any other sign.
No, no, yeah, this would be billboards.
Alright, okay, thank you.
Yep. Alright. And then, the last one is our outdoor aver- or outdoor lighting, um, fairly small section or division. And they're all, the regulations are built to prevent glare and impacts on the adjacent properties, so, um, you know, making sure lights are shining down, they're fully screened in, there's no just open, uh, wall packs glaring into, uh, the neighbors and on the traffic and those sort of things, so, fairly straightforward there. So that's really all I have. Uh, again, I'd encourage folks to go to engagemhk.org and find the Manhattan Development Code Project page, where they can see a lot more videos overview. Uh, we're still producing a lot of videos and getting those up online. There'll be another one coming out this week on, uh, a two-part series on our design standards, so. We're a little behind of where you're viewing, but they're still good stuff. My staff is, and Eric's staff is doing a, an amazing job creating great content. And so, check that out, you can get to the code from there for ENCODE. And, um, let me know if you have any questions.
Uh, Chad, can you clarify, uh, you mentioned that there was, in the green space for the parking lots, there would be bees roving? Bees roving? Do bees ro- roam or rove?
I don't know what the correct word is, but more plants, more opportunities to have bees and bugs and birds and all that, so. I don't know what the correct word is, but more plants, more opportunities to have bees and bugs and birds and all that, so.
Chad, this is Commissioner Reddy. Um, I do like the idea of right-size parking. I think that's very important. We have lots of spaces that are not being used. And as you mentioned, like Walmart, even Home Depot, they already have standards for how many parking spaces they require. Now Walmart is always full, uh, Home Depot, you know, sporadic, but there are some chains, like you had a picture of McDonald's. So they might have certain regulations. I don't know how that falls into all of this. Um, but I think we are going on the right track as far as reducing them. Uh, the electric vehicle charging stations, I like that concept of putting that into regulars- uh, regulations as well. Uh, who pays for those charging stations? So if somebody has an electric car and charges it, um, if it was in the city, are we paying that electric bill?
I don't know that for sure. Uh, Mike, I don't know, Ron, if you've had that experience or, or anybody on your staff. I'd guess, but.
So my understanding is that Evergy, uh, I think it's discretionary on their part as to where they will put those in. Um, I don't know whether or not, uh, if they're subsidized by the business that they'll, they'll, uh, put it in. Uh, I assume that probably would be the case. But prior to Evergy, uh, um, we didn't have, uh, ability for chargeable.
Right.
Metering. Evergy created that, but I don't know if it's a hundred percent. Uh, I think it's still somewhat discretionary on where they approve, agree to put a location. That may change over time depending on demand. Uh, and certainly businesses that have, uh, larger parking requirements and certain amounts. There, there, I, I suspect there might be rate differences, you know, so if they're using so much power, they pay a certain rate for that power.
Right.
Uh, but I don't know those. I mean, it's, it's, it's an evolving technology.
Yeah.
Uh, right now, I think the biggest challenge is, is there is no universal recharging station. Tesla has its own proprietary charging station. It isn't compatible with anything else. Uh, and it's part of a network that only provides Tesla and they have to approve the location.
Okay.
Do you have many, I don't, I hope that's not the, I hope we don't end up like phone chargers? That every brand has its own charging station?
Kinda like cell phones?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
And so, cause that leads, you know, when we're requiring it, well, for who? You know, this, this brand, my, my brand doesn't work in that one.
Right.
So I, if it's on the property owner to put it in, they certainly would want something that's universal. So I, I'm not sure how we're regulating that.
How does it work down at the Discovery Center, Ron? We have two.
So we put in two and those are Evergys. They, they, they own them and you have to put in your, your credit card.
Right.
To pay for the energy you use.
The person charging has to pay with a credit card or whatever.
Previously, we had to foot that bill.
I see, okay.
And couldn't charge.
So Evergy has.
So, you know, it's like giving a free tank of gas away.
Right. And that, that's my, my concern. Did you have something to say, Mark?
I just wondered, uh, these regulations are only, you're not forcing anybody to do anything. You're just allowing them to put them in, in a certain way, at a certain time, at a certain place, um, if the property owner wants it.
Bingo, yep.
Okay. And then they can take it up with Evergy and figure out where they wanna charge people to do it.
Yeah.
Give it away free. City has nothing to do with it.
Right.
All we're worried about is where they go or i- it, how it's planned.
Right. Yep, yeah. We're not requiring it. It's just, uh, accounting for them and saying, you can have those now. Now, with the one at the, um, Discovery Center, or if a restaurant wanted to put it in, we'd have to do some finagling of accessory uses and parking lot design and those sort of things. So we're just giving the ability and, and allowing it through setbacks and accessory uses to a parking lot.
And does that require like two-twenty volt? It's not just one-ten current, is it? It's a higher powered. Yeah, that, so it's, it's not just something anybody's gonna put in haphazardly.
Right.
Yeah, I, I just feel it will have eventually impact on city when they wanna do this, just, just in the way we design and build out over here. Uh, the digital signs question you already answered. Um, so you had compact spaces for cars, eight feet. And, um, you said you're allowing ten percent of parking spaces to compact cars. Is, do people really use compact car spaces only for compact cars? Because I see that at the library, they don't do that.
And in our parking garages where it says park, uh, compact cars, people don't, they park wherever they want.
Is there a reason to even allow it at ten percent? Because then they become pretty cramped, uh, but people are just parking. Um, so I didn't know if they're, uh, it, it makes it somewhat dangerous, one, and because people are not using it for, for the intended use. Um, and they're misusing it, but then it, it just causes a problem. Uh, so I don't know. I don't know if that's necessary to allow ten spa- ten percent of parking spaces for compact cars.
Sure.
Um, just, just a thought. I just, I've never seen them being used for compact cars.
Right. Being a car owner of a tiny little car, so a big man in a tiny car doesn't work all that well. But I own one and it helps, I, I appreciate a s- a compact space. But you're right. I've found a few people that have big vehicles parking them and.
Yeah.
What do you do? There won't be a, you know, a trap. Meter thing for those, but I think it does help with more efficient, uh, parking lot layout where if you could accommodate for some smaller stalls, sign them as compact cars, let a big guy with a tiny car park in it. Um, then you are allowed to, um, utilize that space better than trying to shoehorn a, uh, eighteen and a half by eight and a half stall or you paint it, you know, stripe it saying no parking and someone still parks there, so.
Right.
That, I, I think there's some benefits there, but people are gonna do silly things when people wanna do silly things.
I only say that because a compact car can fit into almost any slot. And when a big car wants to fit, they just use up two compact spaces.
Right, right.
Uh, so I just feel like they're being misused. But, you know, you, you see this more in your profession.
Six inches difference between the eight point eight and a half feet and the eight feet. To me, that is, as Yusha said, it's just not necessary unless you really have a compact car.
Right.
Uh, and there's a big difference between a Fiat, a short guy, or a Scion.
Smart car, yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, a Pinto or whatever they are these days.
I think it's good that we have compact cars. I'm not doing that. What I am saying is, uh, you know, in a bicycle rack, you can only park bicycles, but in compact cars and cars, people tend to misuse them.
Yeah.
Uh, so, and when you take this back to people who are actually developers and do parking lots, maybe they can give you more feedback on that piece of it. Um, but I, I'm glad we're addressing a lot of the parking stuff.
Mm-hmm.
That's huge. You just see vast amounts of parking spaces, good intentions, but are not used.
Right.
Except maybe on a weekend.
With that, yeah.
Yeah, so I, you know, you'd be seeing it all over the place. So maybe that, that space can be utilized a bit better. I like the landscaping ideas you have out there for keeping some greenery as we, uh, have more development in, in our community. So I think this makes it, um, at, at least for me, uh, going through it, understanding it a little bit better. There's some good modifications in there and hopefully we get good feedback from the people that actually develop and construct in those areas as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The digital billboards, um, at one point, there was discussions in previous, uh, years about the use, having some usage that would be for emergencies or, uh, some things like that. Is that, I, I mean, if we're, if we're kind of setting some guardrails around how those three-for-one type of deal, is that still on the table as a, uh, and I don't know if that's a legal question, if we can even, you know, ask them to get, let us use the space if they're under certain conditions for emergencies to alert the public. Um, but since they're nimble and able to be adjusted, they would have been handy during, uh, various times in the past.
Yep. Um, I have not gone and looked for specific regulations for that. The, the, the business owner that suggested this change offered it and, and I think it's a great offer and it's a wonderful community service. Uh, I took it as, uh, that it could be a challenge to write that standard into the zoning regulations. And so I'm sure s- a community or two or several already have that we can go look for. Uh, I just didn't, uh, it, it felt like a problematic standard to write in and so I hadn't, uh, committed the time to it. But if that's something you'd like me to look at, we could certainly see if we can make it happen.
I, I would hope there'd be some less formal.
I agree.
Way to do, to ask and it's like, hey, if there's an emergency, can you put up a message and, um, without having to, yes, put it into twenty-seven pages of, what, what, what scenarios, trying to determine every scenario, when it might be a good idea. I would think we could come up with something easier than that.
I think there's probably, uh, like you said, an easier cooperation between the emergency manager or the dispatcher, the police department.
And that, that may even be the way to do it, is have the emergency people talk with them and leave the city out of it and let's let the EOC and those, those people hash out something.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping.
You done otherwise? Okay, the only thing I wanted to say is, is I, I appreciate the, uh, the ease in the minimum parking thing a little bit and leaving that a little bit more up to, um, the property owner. I, I know when we were building the church out there, some of the guidelines were like, well, if twice a year on Easter and Christmas, you have two-hundred-and-fifty people show up and you're gonna need a hundred-and-twenty-five parking stalls, but we only need seventy parking spots on any other given Sunday at a time.
Yeah.
It, it, it would seem crazy that we'd have to allow for the maximum thing that you only get occasionally.
Yep.
And we were able to work with them and it worked out nicely. We, we get, we can get by with the spots and we've got some gravelled areas for overflow when the time comes. But, yeah, I've always, yeah, looking for more flexibility, um, and common sense interpretation. And I, I think you're getting that with that. And I'd like to continue us heading down that path of, of flexibility, cooperation. If, and, and leaving a little bit more of the responsibility to, are you sure that's okay? That, are you sure that's what you want? And, and then making them accept the responsibility.
Yeah.
And so I, I, the downside to this is not parking. I, I constantly get people saying, how is this Tommy's and West Loop gonna get those people out of their parking, out of their car wash? And we'll, we'll have to see, but that is Tommy's and West Loop's problem.
Right.
And I'm gonna continue to tell people, take it up with the West Loop and Tommy's people, cause a lot of people are worried about that.
And if it's a problem, people will stop going there.
That's the bottom line, yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to just comment. I'd like to see some of this be philosophically the, the same. What I mean by that is, you've got a minimum there and you're saying, okay, the minimum I'm a problem with, but, but why put a maximum on there? If, if I own the property and I wanna put more parking there, I shouldn't be allowed to. It's my property. I don't need the city dictating. You know, and, and so what if, if Home Depot builds a bigger parking lot, they may wanna put trees out there in the spring to sell them, which is what they do every year. So I'm not really in favor of telling someone, you, you, you can't build more. The, the minimum idea, you know, is fine. And I feel the same way on the bike design, the bike racks as I do on the charging stations. If you want a charging station, fine, put one in, we allow it. Same with bike rack, but requiring it is another story. And then with the compact, you know, parking places, again, I think they should be allowed. We shouldn't dictate. If you wanna put them in, fine, but, cause they also accommodate motorcycles.
Yeah.
I mean, and we don't, we don't dictate, you know, motorcycle parking, but we wanna dictate bicycle parking. And so, so I really think, you know, if you, if we're gonna philosophically, you know, stick to a certain way, we should just, you know, ta- take, take the blinders off on some of that. And then, um, on the digital billboards, I, I like the progress there. And I think, and I agree with Mark that, you know, we can probably make an agreement so that the EOC can tap into that and, and emergencies of the police department. And I think our local business guy that owns that would be cooperative. In, in our particular case, that might not be true everywhere. And the only other city I've seen where they've done that is down, uh, where my daughter lives, Bentonville, Springdale, Fayetteville. They have the digital billboards and they do use them for tornadoes and things like that. And they've got that set up through their EOC where they can punch some, some buttons.
Yeah.
So I think that's pretty good, but, uh, you know, excellent presentation. Now, we didn't get a chance yet to get any public comments. We didn't receive any, you know, online. Nobody signed up in advance. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak concerning these items on the Manhattan Developmental Code? Okay, sounds like, uh, no one's there to do that. And, uh, since this was a discussion item, there is no possible motion. So thank you for the presentation and, uh, and drive on. This has been a massive project, but we're making great progress.
I think so. Excited about it, thank you.
That's good to see. Okay, we have one last item and that's, uh, an executive, uh, session. So we need a motion to go into executive session for approximately thirty minutes.
Mayor, I move that we recess into executive session to discuss the terms of the agreement between the city administration and local two-two-seven-five International Association of Firefighters that presently need to remain confidential pursuant to the exceptions set forth in KSA seventy-five forty-three nineteen B three related to employer-employee negotiations and to resume the open meeting at eight fifty-five PM in the city commission room.
Second.
Okay, city clerk, call the rule.
Fisher Haddasol?
Yes.
Fisher Estabro?
Yes.
Fisher Ready?
Yes.
Mayor Butler?
Yes.
Fisher Morse?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Did you say eight fifty-five? Was that the time?
Yeah.
I'll, I'm gonna put the time on here, actually. Mike's, Mike's on, on the. You got my email there?
Okay.
Don't have to get out of the meeting.
Okay, we're out of executive session. No binding action was taken during the executive session, therefore no vote in the open meeting is needed. So at this point, we can adjourn the meeting. Thank you everyone for attending.